So I want to welcome everyone to the Town Board meeting October twentieth. I'd like everyone to please stand for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. All right, everyone, welcome. We are here this evening. I know I see some new faces here tonight, so I think I'll start tonight by introducing at the, uh, by far left. We have our legal attorney, Mr. Joe McKay. We have councilman Tim Finnegan. And we have Councilwoman Kate Luciani, councilman Tyler Etzel. We have our town clerk, Mrs. Erin Houghton. We have Lieutenant Phillips, Lieutenant Watson, I mean Chief Watson, excuse me. And we have our legal counsel here also with Joe McKay. My name is Tom Burke, I'm the town supervisor. We're gonna start this, tonight's work session with the library board. I know that the library board has a number of issues and items that they'd like to discuss. Hopefully we can get to each and every one of them. So, um, it's, I'm gonna open it up now to the library board. If anybody would like to come up and start to discuss the issues one, one at a time, what they would like to discuss with us. This is gonna be a quick one.
Hello, um, just gotta push the power button on the light that comes on. Little red light comes on, don't talk. Hello, my name is Sarah Johnson, library director. Um, can you, so...
Can you speak up a little louder or pull it closer to you, please?
Pull it up, pull, move the mic.
Pull it, pull it, move the mic.
It'll come up, Sarah.
Uh, pull it closer.
Um, and I guess the main point that we wanted to discuss tonight is the security cameras in that building was covered.
Okay, um, we'll start with the discussion, um, all right, we have our attorney Joe McKay. Joe, would you like to start off with that topic?
Um, so I see that, uh, Dan Pedgro and the library attorneys here, over a number of months, uh, we've exchanged some correspondence. And then we had started to negotiate. I remember an agreement between the town and the library concerning, concerned cameras. At least, at least with respect to the Central Valley location. Your counsel wanted to include the senior center location and the MOA as well. Um, I think that we should, and essentially just kind of as a rule of statute, we were, we came to an impasse, um, negotiating the MOA. I guess we're all expecting that we would have this meeting, you know, much sooner than, than we did. There is something, you know, there are a few things, one in particular. Um, Mr. Pedgro, and I think it's some correspondence from yourself or the board members. You've indicated that you have concerns about privacy when the video cameras won't be, won't be in operation. A few basic points. There's a enormous distinction between the senior center location and the Central Valley location. The town obviously owns the senior center building. In my discussions with the town board, I feel it is extremely important to have security cameras in the senior center to protect the patrons, to protect the staff, and to protect the town residents. Uh, Lieutenant Phillips is here tonight, and I think at some point it would be appropriate to hear from him. Because he has a lot of detail concerning the use of the cameras. I'm just kind of speaking summarily about the fact that I've spoken with the town board about this. The security in the library is a paramount concern for the town. Mr. Pedgro and I can probably talk about this separately if necessary. Dan, you cited a certain section in the CPLR, that forty-five oh nine section. I've looked at it, and maybe it's something you and I should discuss because I don't, I don't think, I don't think that gives the, um, the library the authority, so to speak, to, uh, first of all, I just don't think it's applicable necessarily. And I certainly don't think it's a reason that the, the branch should be shut down. But going to the cameras themselves, I think what I'd like to do, if Lieutenant Phillips can, is speak factually about what the cameras record, how they work. Because, Dan, in your, in your citation, you're concerned about personally capturing personally identifiable information about the patrons, uh, and the statute sets forth certain criteria. I can tell you without a question, and anybody up here could contradict me if I say anything more, it is certainly not the town's intent to try to find out what books people in the library are reading or what searches they're going to on the computer. As I said before, the town's board, town board's primary concern is the safety of the town residents, town employees, staff, and the patrons of the library. Kevin, do you think this would be a good time to just give a little explanation of what the, what the cameras do? Because I think there was a lot of...
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lieutenant Phillips from the town of Woodbury Police Department. Um, I have a couple of things here regarding the camera system. Um, at first, many years ago, we decided, um, as a town to try to update our security and our alarm capabilities throughout the town by the Woodbury Police Department becoming a central alarm station for all the town and village buildings, uh, within the, um, town of Woodbury. Meaning that if an alarm is pulled, you're not gonna go to ADT or Sloan or anything like that. And to try to save a cost factor in the long run, all alarms would come to the town of Woodbury because we are a business that operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So with that being said, as we upgraded the alarm system throughout the town and upgraded the buildings with panic buttons and pull stations, we decided to implement cameras in the town, whereas if an alarm is pulled or a panic button is hit, wherever that camera is in that station would pop up in dispatch and give live feed to the dispatchers so they are able to tell the police officers of what they're responding to and what they're walking into. That being said, the library was our last hurdle to try to get completed. Um, that being said as well, there's been a lot of information out there between different options that the town has chosen and that the library board came up with and has put out publicly. What I'd like to do is I'd like to touch on those two options, if I could, to try to get everybody up to speed of why a certain option is better than the other. And one of the proposed questions regarding the cameras is why are we going to move with the town's option one over what the library decided is option two? And something to consider for option one, again, is the Woodbury Police Department is a central station for alarms. I stated that the town buildings, which have panic buttons when pulled, activate the police department's central dispatcher with a loud audible alarm. When that is pulled, comes up live time video feed, appears onto a screen that alerts dispatchers to what's going on in that general area. The dispatcher now has real time video feed into location as to form officers of what they're responding to. Once that alarm is secure, and they get on the radio and say that everything's fine, the panic button is reset and the video feed automatically comes to a halt until the next time an alarm is pulled. The library will then become, become part of a townwide security solution which integrates all employees sharing the same experience throughout the town. Now, what does that mean? That means if, if Joe Zanero, who's here, happens to be up at the Parks Department and has a problem, he knows where to pull an alarm or how to trip an alarm. Now, if Joe, considering that the Parks Department covers all town buildings, runs into a problem here in the town hall, Joe knows how to activate the alarm. He knows how to push that panic button. And there's no confusion because throughout the town, all alarms and panic buttons are the same across the board. It doesn't cause confusion for the employee.
Lieutenant...
Yes?
I may interject from time to time.
Sure.
I don't mean to break the train of thought.
No, please.
There was something that was mentioned by the chief earlier tonight, which was if members of the library board or the staff have any questions about how the system operates, uh, or, or even where it goes, I think you said, chief, to the police department, we'd make arrangements to show how the system is used and what happens when the video feed comes up with the police department.
I have no issue whatsoever with anybody coming down and looking at what we would see. Um, and if there is any apprehension about what, uh, attorney... I'll just repeat what I had said, is I have no apprehension with anybody from the town, I'm sorry, from the library board coming down and viewing exactly what we see. Um, again, to reiterate what Attorney McKay said, I looked at, uh, different type of scenarios when we had them in different locations. You can't see what someone picks up, you can't see a computer screen. Um, a person would physically have to take a look. They would have to walk it to the camera and hold it in front of the camera in order to be able to see what that person was looking at. Getting back to my original point, I will invite any of you, the minute this thing goes online, to come down and observe it. This way, if you have any apprehension, if there's any questions about exactly what is being seen and when it actually pops up, it only is, it's only fed into one computer in the entire department. It's not on display to the dispatchers. It will only come up in the event of an emergency. As Lieutenant said, somebody hits a panic button, that's when the dispatcher sees it. As soon as the alarm is cleared, it goes back into where it's only in that one computer station. The dispatcher doesn't have live feed to watch the library. You don't have that key to the library.
Moving forward, with the library's current camera system, which is option two, um, that has been put out to the general public, states that the police department would have immediate access to live stream video feed. I'm not really sure how this would be possible unless the dispatcher was able to connect via computer to your server to stream the feed. And that means the dispatcher that is on duty, because we usually only have one on duty, would have to log into a computer in order to obtain access through the internet. It would be very time consuming for a dispatcher to do that, especially in a time of crisis or possibly worst case scenario, an active shooter event. And that is time, minutes, seconds, that the dispatcher is not going to have to do that. The computer network of the police department is a secure network and has many different firewalls and a server. You're looking at well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of merchandise that is strictly secure and cannot have access to just anybody. Um, it has to be secure not only for the police records, but to stop different, different threats that try to access our system literally on a daily basis. People try to hack into our system all the time. And it's stopped because I get a feed out once a month of what is being, or trying to be compromised. You cannot have outside software placed on your server computers due to the compromising nature. Option two would not be able to work due, due to being on a completely different platform from what is currently installed throughout the rest of the town buildings. Also, any camera that's not installed on a town or village building, I don't know if a lot of people know this, but they have to be NDAA compliant. Which in two thousand nineteen, the National Defense Authorization Act, the NDAA, prohibits the use of multiple Chinese-made video surveillance cameras and security systems by the US government purchasing NDAA compliant products. Which is important that any municipality or government entity has to have. They have to go by that law.
Lieutenant, Lieutenant, I spoke with, uh, the town's security advisor. And tell me if I'm wrong, what I thought he told me was that he could not, one, that the two systems were not compatible. It's, it means the option two, library option, but their system is not compatible. And secondly, that he could not confirm that the library's existing system was NDAA compatible.
That is correct.
Or compliant.
Compliant, that is correct. Most, most security cameras that, that you purchase, believe it or not, are, are made from China. And, um, and if they are from China, right off the bat, they are not NDAA compliant. Our security system installed throughout the town is monitored twenty-four seven with problems, for problems with the cameras or any type of disconnect from the system. As you're aware, disconnects from the system can be an issue with using the current internet provider that the town has. But once we receive an alert that a town camera is offline or a security, um, panic button is offline, the alert happens within real time in dispatch. Notifications are made and a tech is sent to resolve the issue almost immediately. If a problem with the server appears throughout the system, a failsafe is automatically initiated, triggering the standby server to start and the monitoring continues with no problems. And the standby server almost acts like a backup generator, for those of you who are familiar. With option two, with the library, we don't know what company is monitoring the security system for issues. How often are those same checks made and how oft, how often is that monitoring done? Who is making notifications to have the problem fixed? If one of those cameras goes down or possibly offline, it could be weeks before someone even notices this. Or in any case, it wouldn't be noticed, unfortunately, until a threat occurred. The statement of option two stating that the current system functions very well and has only needed maintenance once over a five-year period is really not fair or realistic to say. One, because the current library system is not being monitored in real time, so you don't have an idea of when the camera experiences connection loss. If regular maintenance on the cameras are not done, like previously stated, you'll never know if you have that problem. With option one, and that agreement we have, onsite maintenance is done twice per year to ensure that all cameras are up to date and cleaned. If they're not up to date, they are replaced with no problems. And option two, it states that the staff has the option to move cameras at the police department's request. How would you manage to do that during an active shooter situation? Also regarding option two, it reads that the cost factor reads an estimated five hundred dollars for both buildings. Really not a fair comparison due to someone being quoted a price that does not understand how prevailing wages work. As we all know, New York's prevailing wage law requires contractors to pay workers on town work sites an hourly rate that is much higher than minimum wage rates. I don't think prevailing wage factor or the cost to properly secure the network to our current security system, which monitors the networks and provides maintenance plan to the network, were really ever included in the quote that someone had received. Lastly, and I just wanna put this out there because I really don't think it's fair to people that don't know the complete background of why this is being done. People are being a little bit misleading to the general public regarding library law CPLR four five oh nine. That when they're stating the installation of cameras violates privacy laws. Board members have gone on to state that the police department is recording library records, that we're there to personally identify details of what users are doing within the library building. And unfortunately, that's really not just the case. It's been explained by myself numerous times, both publicly and privately, to the board and to the general public, that cameras are only security cameras. They're replacing the current ones that you have. The library staff will be armed with panic buttons that when pressed, the alarm will go off at police headquarters. A live cam review of the library will come onto screen in dispatch, which I told you will give eyes into the building. Will be able to see and hear what's going on. And the dispatcher will be able to notify the officers what they will be responding to, God forbid of an active shooter event where an employee is being held hostage. The cameras are placed inside the library, five of them to be exact, to allow for a general overview of the library's floor plan from a wide angle lens. These cameras cannot be moved, they cannot be changed, and they do not allow for any pan tilt or zoom in or out. Not, nor can they see what an individual is reading or even looking at on a computer screen. The only things that these cameras do, they provide another layer of protection for the residents and employees that are here and work in the town of Woodbury. I hope that provided a, a good description of what we're trying to do. And, uh, hopefully we can come to terms here moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Pedgro, the, um, obviously the library has...
Can you speak louder, can you speak up, because I can't hear you at all.
Okay, so obviously, the, the library has its own cameras in. There have been a few meetings that Lieutenant Phillips have attended and said essentially what he said tonight. Which is that there, there's really no personally identifiable information that's picked up. So, in addition to that, the town did survey. Many, many, many libraries in a force of a hundred buildings, uh, not only in the, in the town, but in county, have security camera systems. So just to put it to the library, most libraries have systems. You have your own. You've tried repeatedly to explain that we're not attempting to capture personally identifiable information. What do you want the town board to keep doing?
Yes, it's on. Well, I think in terms of what we want the town board to do, um, and what we were seeking with the MOA was assurance that these things, that, I mean, some of these things are, the first time that I'm hearing them tonight. I mean, some of them, you know, have we been told before. Um, and so we're seeking assurance that these, you know, what everyone is saying is, is the case. Um, in terms of our security system being ND, an NDAA security system, that's something that I don't know off the top of my head, but it's something that we could certainly find out. Um, we didn't know that that was something that was important. Um, so now that we know, we can, we, we can find that out. Um, and as we said before, we do have camera systems in both buildings, we have had for years. Um, but I guess my question now is, you mentioned that you feel that CPLR forty-five oh nine is not applicable. Um, and I'm just curious as to how it's not applicable in this situation.
Your, your attorney may have a slightly different opinion than me, I'll just assume that. The, that forty-five oh nine section to me is in a section of the, the New York State statutes, statutes, which is under the Civil Practice Law, and was, was actually under the article entitled Evidence. And that section talks about capturing personally identifiable information, whether that information can be used at trial or not, and whether or not that information can be subpoenaed. Now that it's a trial, that one's gonna be a subpoenas. And this is about the safety of people in the library. If the passion ever went to court against the town or the library, sure judge would have to decide whether or not, if personally identifiable information did work out, depending on the saying it's not, did it work out, whether or not that would be subpoenaable. I can't imagine that ever being likely because if the lieutenant didn't say it, my understanding is that the system overwrites itself every thirty years.
Correct.
So, um, respectfully, that's something that Dan and I can, can discuss. But I personally believe that it's, it's not happening. But yeah, I'm not, you can respond if you want to, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I mean, it's just the way, just the way, just the way I see the issue.
Good evening, uh, town members, uh, the town board and supervisor Burke. So I just want to echo, uh, the, the library director's comments that there's a lot of information that is being presented here for the first time that, uh, the library board was unaware of. But my...
Excuse me, you just, um, say your name, please.
Sure, Dan Pedgro.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I know that the library board submitted a, uh, these options, uh, seven months ago. And this is kind of the first time they're hearing about concerns about, uh, NDAA compliance. It's also, uh, I believe the first time, uh, that we're hearing some information where an op, an opportunity being offered to the library board members to review what, what the cameras are actually focusing on. I know that in a previous meeting that, uh, I would, I attended back in May, there was, um, specific, uh, representation made at the time that the footage, uh, for the, that would be recorded or captured by the town's cameras would be dumped periodically into the police station and stored for an approximately sixty day period. I believe that's, uh, what Lieutenant Phillips had, had mentioned at, at our meeting. And so I think the concern is, is that, you know, that stored information could be construed in a liberal interpretation of the, of the statute as a record. I mean, the, the, the provisions of the CPLR that, uh, Mr. McKay, uh, referenced, uh, and I think he might, would, would agree, doesn't really define what the word records are. But it does reference the ability of, um, I think the concern behind the statute is that the rights of patrons to read information, read books, browse information on computers, that is information that really should not be disclosed, uh, outside of, um, unlawfully ordered subpoena. And the, the concern that I think the library board had shared, uh, back in May when this, you know, after this, we had this initial meeting, um, was that the cameras, uh, would pick this up. I don't believe at the time, and I could be wrong, I, I don't have a recollection that there was a discussion about the fact that these cameras are not designed or would never be angled or tilted or, or have a zoom in feature that, that could pick up, um, what a patron, uh, is viewing or browsing, uh, while in the library. And I think we've all agreed that, uh, that's something that we don't want. We want our patrons to, uh, have their privacy and, and what they view protected. I mean, that's really a, 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 really a right that, that they're entitled to. And it's certainly, uh, indebted in, uh, in the library's own policies on making sure... and it's certainly indebted in the library's own policies on making sure that this information is confidential. So I just had wanted to state that, just so that we're a little bit, you know, make sure they were clear. Because this is information that Lieutenant Phillips shared this evening that I don't think I was privy to, and I don't believe any of the library board members were. So we certainly appreciate that information being provided. But one of the concerns, I think, that the library has is that, you know, they have been asking for dialogue, and they feel that they have been a little bit stonewalled, that the town board has not really been very receptive to their concerns or their requests. And then on top of that, without any notice, advance notice, and with, in the absence of any memorandum of agreement being negotiated or resolved, that these cameras started getting installed in the library just the other day. So I hope that you, as a board, appreciate that the library, which is managed by a separate board of trustees and employs a director to make sure that all of its policies are followed, I hope you can appreciate the concerns that the library board members and director have with these actions being taken where their requests have kind of gone unheard or unresponded to.
I just, I just got to correct you there. We've been wanting to have, trying to get a meeting for the last several months. We wanted to get these security cameras in there to make the area secure. And the meeting's been pushed down, pushed down, pushed down from the library board because either you weren't there or some, there was never any, they never wanted to have any dialogue without you there. So it was really either you or the library board that had pushed this down at least three months.
Excuse me, Mr. Rensselaar. I know this is a work session, so I'm...
Could you please come off, can you please come off?
I can't, I can't, sorry.
We need to have a microphone.
Well, there's the...
I can, I can.
We have wireless, they can't say it's still...
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Just be careful, it's a break.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to give you the break. Mr. Rensselaar, I actually have a timeline with everything that's done on. Actually, we never canceled the meeting. We actually have emails, canceled meetings.
Like, they couldn't make it, we're not gonna have the meeting.
I'm sorry, that has never happened. And actually, we actually have the paperwork and emails. And if you'd like, you can foil any of those because they're there. I mean, we actually have things from your supervisor saying that the meeting was postponed or canceled, or that it just never happened. We do have a paper trail.
All right, bring it in, show me. Because I, I got emails saying that Dan could not make the meeting, so that...
That actually happened one time over... And I do have a timeline if you'd like to see it, but I did prepare. Sarah, if you want to just give him that. I do have a timeline of exactly what happened since May and everything that's concerned. So I'm a, you know, old school teacher, I really believe in backing things up with paper. And that's right there. So thank you for listening. Hopefully it works.
I will. Thank you all for those comments. I'm Mr. Pedigree, right, Dan, right? Yes, you had also just wanted to mention that you made a comment that the board employs the director. That's not a true statement. Town employs the library board. She's a town board. But just wanted to mention that, just could have mentioned that, the library board, okay? So thank you very much. As far as the timeline, Tyler, you have that. So I'd just like to maybe mention a few things here. I also did a timeline, I mean, if I could read it. From the beginning, I just want everybody to know that from the moment our meetings were broke, you know, the board and the library board, my prerequisite was that we would ensure transparency, have all meetings in a public forum, tape them so our constituents and our taxpayers are fully aware. The first meeting that I have was with the library, occurred on April 7th. The day before, on 4/6, at 4:01, the town board received library information from the library director, one day before the town board meeting. The day of the meeting on 4/7, the town board received additional information from the library director after 4:00 PM. On May 9th, on behalf of myself, I scheduled a follow-up, library-town board meeting from May 17th. The second meeting took place on May 17th. Board members were present on May 17th, and Deputy Supervisor Desiree Popkin, I was not at that meeting. I'm sorry. I was not at the May 17th meeting, okay? I was in the hospital, I had surgery. At the conclusion of the May 17th meeting, a request was made by Mr. Daniel Pedigree, library lawyer, dear attorney. He was to compile a draft memorandum of agreement that was due on June 1st. The document was received by our attorney on June 8th, 2022. Our legal counsel, Mr. Joe McKay, responded to this document on July 7th, at which time additional requests were made of Mr. Pedigree. On July 6th, at 10:06 PM, the president of the Woodbury Public Library sent an email stating the library potentially had a second security camera option to share. Woodbury Public Library President requested to meet with the board, requested a session like the one that took place on May 17th. I requested all board members to be present and have one discussion. Work schedule, work session scheduled for July 21st. In addition, the town requested that this potential second option be sent to Clerk Desiree Popkin by July 15th, 2022. Monday, July 18th, at 6:04 PM, Woodbury Public Library President submitted a second proposal for the library's security cameras. On July 19th, Mr. Pedigree responded to Joe McKay regarding the MOA. Additional changes were made. On Wednesday, July 20th, at 8:46 AM, Clerk Desiree Popkin sent an email to the Woodbury Public Library Board postponing the next day work session. The town board and their attorney needed sufficient time to review Woodbury Public Library President Kathy Schmidt's submission, along with updates received from Mr. Pedigree. Woodbury Public Library Kathy Schmidt responded thanking the town for the heads up. On July 25th, at 9:32 AM, an email went out to the Woodbury Public Library President stating August town board meeting are getting consolidated to one meeting on August 11th. Board officially invited the entire library board and their legal counsel to attend the joint work session on August 11th. Woodbury Public Library President responded on July 25th, at 11:42 AM, stating that their lawyer, Mr. Pedigree, would not be able to attend the August 11th meeting. Library board president stated their legal counsel could not attend, and they required legal input from their lawyer. On August 11th and August 16th, town board legal counsel sent an additional letter to library legal counsel requesting follow-up on outstanding requests. Town board waited to confirm the next meeting once they are in receipt of missing information. Library board assumed the meeting had been placed on the agenda for September 1st. This was never confirmed due to outstanding requests from the Woodbury Public Library Legal Counsel. On September 1st, Attorney Joe McKay sent communication to the town board stating the last email received from Dan Pedigree was back in July. Town board was still waiting for their items requested as a precursor to the meeting. On September 9th, Desiree Popkin sent an email to the Woodbury Public Library Board inviting them to attend the September 15th town board meeting for a work session. On September 10th, Woodbury Public Library President responded, the library board and legal counsel could not attend this September 15th work session. Woodbury Public Library President requested we hold off confirming the date in October until Mr. McKay received correspondence from Mr. Pedigree. Town board legal counsel, Joe McKay received a response from Mr. Dan Pedigree on September 20th. Library follow-up meeting was scheduled for October 20th. Were you able to follow along with that?
Yeah, I'd say in here where it was July 21st, meeting postponed.
Can you read July 11th?
What?
Read July 11th.
I haven't read July 11th, so...
Can you read July 11th? Supervisor Burton, you got July 11th?
I saw three things, three months where it was postponed by the library. In your own, in your, in Sarah's...
Kathy Schmidt, I am the president of the... You don't see July 11th? I'll help you out.
Thank you, I appreciate your help. Thank you. Good.
Can you go back to July 7th, email from the town to the library?
July, since July 7th, yeah.
Break up.
Town legal counsel responded to this document on July 7th, at which time additional requests were made of Mr. Pedigree.
Do you have July 7th, Desiree emailed on your recap, and she said that she would like documents by July 15th and a meeting for July 21st? Do you have that?
In addition, the town requested this potential second option to be sent to Desiree Popkin by July 15th.
Mm-hmm. But what is on July 11th?
I said I don't have any. I'm just read, no.
That's weird, because Desiree sent an email on July 11th to only two people, left you all off, saying to Stratton, "Go ahead."
If I may.
Yes.
I believe that email was the signed proposals that the town board approved.
I have the email, it came in a FOIA.
I understand. And did it not have the attached two signed proposals to it that the board approved at the meeting the day before?
You have the thing to move ahead. That's what you said. And he said, "Got it, I'm on it."
Yes, the board, they took action at the July 7th meeting.
But then did you not intend to entertain option two?
You're asking me? Because I'm not the person you asked that question to. I have no say in anything.
Well, you did send the okay to Stratton.
Why, Miss Schmidt, let me, let me answer your question. You asked that question. I did, yes. Because as town clerk, my responsibility is after a board meeting to send correspondence related to said board meeting. At the July 7th town board meeting, this board voted to authorize the supervisor to sign those two proposals. The supervisor signed those two proposals, and I forwarded them to the vendor. As I did with every and all proposals, I believe they're signing a proposal this evening. The supervisor will sign it, and I will send it to whichever that vendor is.
With the note to move ahead.
Well, that's what happens when you sign a proposal.
I understand that. The email on the 7th to us went to fourteen people. The email telling them to go ahead with the job went to two. What happened to the fourteen?
Well, because Lieutenant Phillips and Basil Marraux. Because Basil's the contractor, and Lieutenant Phillips is the contractor.
Why was everybody else off that email?
Why would everyone else be on that email?
It involves us.
The town board authorized work to be done, and as the town clerk, I sent the signed proposal to the contractor.
The signed proposal to work in the library. Where's the library?
Did you authorize the work to be done?
That I want to sign?
No, that I wouldn't have included.
Hold on, Dan. Thank you very much.
You can laugh while you're laughing. That's quite silly. It's okay. I wasn't laughing at you. I'm just shocked that he didn't have July 11th. Well, I'm sorry, you're shocked.
Mr. Rosa, can I ask a question? Mr. Pedigree, I understand the comment made before about creating a record, etc. If the, if it were as simple as, let me, let me take a step back. One of the things that the town board discussed, or has been discussing with emails is the sign that was posted in the library. It says that the town is taking unlawful action. I think that sign is factually incorrect. Because despite your legal argument that maybe creating a record and you might have to have some kind of room for that, those cameras are not live. They're not recording anything. So to say that the town is acting unlawfully by installing cameras in its own building, I have to say is, if I were a town board member, I would be very upset about that. Essentially telling the town board that you're acting unlawfully when there is simply no unlawful action whatsoever. So I will ask, on behalf of the town board, what is the library going to do about the sign? Will it take the sign down? Or is the town board going to take the sign down?
Hello? So I just want to note that I don't have a copy of the sign in front of me, but I don't believe that the sign names the town at any point.
Well, who else the county would be implying took unlawful action?
Who put the sign up?
The library did.
What, no. Who? Who put the sign up? What person put the sign up again outside the door?
I requested that the sign be put up.
So you know what it says?
Yeah, I don't have it memorized. But, but I, as I remember, it does not name the town. Like I said, I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
Well, hold on. This is got email, I sent all of its titles.
It says, the line that says, "Please be aware that cameras have been installed in this building." And just to state the obvious, it's not the library's building, it's the town's building, that limits the library's ability to operate normally under New York State law. The result would let you inform you that the time being where I'm unable to allow public in the building. And it was on the same number of hours or range of services. It's very carefully worded, but I think it's clear that essentially it's saying that you can't operate lawfully under New York State law because there are cameras installed in the town's building, which weren't even operating. So this is not accurate. It's not accurate. And I'm just going to ask, Dan, you want to respond or you want to pause to respond? Is the sign going to be taken down? I have a couple questions. Let's just get them out, because we're going to move back. Is the sign going to get taken down? Is the library going to open the doors to let patrons and town residents in the building? Is the library going to continue to attract the cameras being installed and basically come to an impasse with the town board because the town board wants safety in the library and the library doesn't want cameras? I don't understand why if these get written over, as has been discussed many times, somebody can subpoena that record under the section that Mr. Pedigree cited. If it exists, if it doesn't exist, if it doesn't exist, there won't be subpoena. There won't be nothing to do under CPLR 4509. What is the library going to do? Right now, you're in a town's building. You have no lease. You pay no rent. You want the town to call for personnel lists so that you can hire people. And then when personnel from the library talk to the town supervisor about a personnel issue, the supervisor gets an email that says, you can't have any, essentially, libraries in paraphrasing. You can't have any content because the library person, the library supervises its personnel. There's a long history here of the way that the town library and the town board have interacted. And my understanding of this goes back forty years. So on the one hand, the library is saying, the employees are library employees. On the other hand, the library is saying to the town, please call for lists because the town has to call for lists. Under the paperwork that gets filed with the Orange County Department of Personnel, the employees, from what I've seen, the library employees, from what I've seen, are listed as town employees. So I ask directly, if the library's position is that these employees are solely library employees and the supervisor and the town board should not be telling them what to do, here's the question I have. If they're taken the position of their library employees, does that mean that the library is actually going to start supervising them? Hiring them, coordinating their benefits, paying their salaries, paying their personnel costs and pensions? And is the library going to go to the county and have the county change all of the library employees from town employees to library employees? from town employees to library employees? That's one, that's, that's just one set of questions.
Okay. Um, since that's a lot of questions, can I start with that?
Well, maybe I can get them all out. Because I don't, I don't know how many of the boards are going to answer any of this. You know. Here's the question. And I apologize for, for basically monopolizing the town board's time, but we've talked a lot about this and I'm just kind of trying to act as a facilitator. And I ask again, what does the library board want to do? The library board either has to take the position that it's going to be supervising the library employees and that they are library employees, or not. You can't have it both ways. You can take the, you can't take the position that the town has no authority to make capital improvements and install cameras in its own building. You might be able to make a good argument that the cameras can't be installed in the Central Valley building, but you're in the town's building. You have no lease. You pay no rent. The town wants to put in security cameras to protect the citizens of the town and you shut the library down. What does the library want to do going forward? Are you going to create an independent library? Are you going to take over the staff? Take over the employees? Are you going to contact Orange County Personnel? What, what is the library going to do?
All right, so I'll try to start at the beginning, but I may not have gotten, written down every question.
It's okay, because I won't be able to remember all my questions.
Okay. All right. Um, so the first, so the first question, you know, are we gonna open the doors tomorrow? I very much hope that we are. It depends a lot on what, what happens tonight. That's why we're very interested to have this meeting.
What would you need from the town board tonight to open the doors tomorrow?
Well, you mentioned earlier that you said the cameras were not active, but you were told earlier about, earlier today, that they weren't active.
I can let Lieutenant Phillips answer that question.
The cameras are working. The panic alarms are working. The pull- The cameras are active as- I turned it off. The cameras are active where they're, they have electricity. If I, if you told me to go record now, I could. The alarms are active, the pull stations are active, but the cameras are currently not recording. That was going to take place Monday morning. Because I knew we had a meeting this evening. I wanted to see where we stood after tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's really important information for us to know. So since they're not recording, that's, thank you.
And I apologize that, you know, maybe I, I misspoke, but my intent was that they were not recording. That, that's what I meant by, by my statement.
Um, okay. The next one, um, are we going to object to the cameras? Again, I think the issue isn't that we object to the cameras, because of course, as mentioned earlier, we do have cameras already and we have had cameras for a few years. So it's not that we object to the cameras themselves. Security obviously was an issue before when we installed the first system. Um, like it's just, like I said before, we need the assurances on where, how the footage will be used or really not used. Um, and, and viewed and all of that. So with the MOA, that's what we were seeking to, um, to clarify.
Yeah.
Um, so that's-
And, and I'll just, I'll just respond to that. There's no way, there's no way that we're going to be able to enter into an MOA anytime soon. Because we have a fundamental legal dis- eh, factual legal quasi-legal disagreement about what properties the MOA should cover. So, that's going to be a much longer term resolution of that issue.
Okay. Could, could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We could have an MOA separately for each building.
But we still have a fundamental disagreement about the main issue, which is the cameras.
Um, again, i- it's, it's just the assurance that, um, you know, on, on how the footage is being used. Um, so I think, you know, I, like I said, we had cameras before. You know, not, not an issue with cameras themselves, but just making sure that, you know, in the use of the footage, that we're complying with, that what we need to comply with as a library, which I know is different than a lot of other organizations.
Can I ask you a terminal question?
If it's okay.
Yeah. Maybe I should stand so everybody else can sit down. Again, I understand what you were saying before about, you know, the, the recording. Of course, right now, there's no, no recording captured.
Sure. And, and, um, I, I do think in, uh, there was a, an offer here tonight to the library board that if they want to see what these cameras are actually picking up and recording. And because representations were made that there is no zoom-in feature, they're not going to actually observe that. Maybe we could use that opportunity to offer the library director and any board member to see, you know, before, you know, before these things actually go live for, for recording. Uh, if that's what the intention is.
I just think that's exactly what the chief and the town said.
How about, how about you come down tonight? We can come do it right now if you like. And you could put all of this to bed.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Pedigree can sort of be-
Sure, I, I, that's great. I'm, I'm, I'm all for it.
We'll make it, Dan, we'll make it a road trip. We'll make it a road trip.
I'm all for it, as long as Mr. McKay's company. Um, so yes, that's, uh-
So Dan, very, very specifically, because I think everyone in this room wants two things. They want the library to be safe and they want it to open. As long as the town agrees to abide by that section of the CPLR, which means essentially, we're not going to release any personally identifiable information except by a court order, which is the law anyway, isn't that enough to just simply allow the cameras to operate and open the library?
Yeah. Well, so I would like to put, we, I've heard a lot of words mentioned and, and here tonight. Um, I think the whole idea, and I think we had said this some time ago, let's put this all in writing. I understand that this is a town-owned building and you've made it perfectly clear tonight that the library is there, there's no lease and we don't pay rent. But here's the issue. Uh, the issue is, is that under the New York State Education Law, um, and I just, I'm gonna cite this. I just want everyone to be clear about this and, because maybe, may, maybe the, the town board is, is not aware. Um, public libraries that are authorized to be established by action of the voters or their representatives shall be managed by trustees, who shall have all the powers of trustees of other educational institutions of the university as defined in this chapter. And that's right in the New York State Education Law. The Woodbury Public Library is a public library as defined under the New York State Education Law. They are managed by trustees who have all powers granted to them under the statute. And the powers of trustees of institutions of the university, that is, of any corporation that's created by charter, which, uh, that, the Woodbury Public Library Board of Trustees, it's a chartered institution from the board of regents. Uh, they have the specific power to, among other things, take and hold by gift grant advisor request in their own right, you know, any, any kind of property, real or personal property, and they have the right to use that property as they see fit. So while they don't have a lease to the building, they do have certain authorities granted to them by, by New York State law to operate a public library. And I think part of the concern has been is that with the issues in security, as the library director said, is, is a paramount concern of the board of trustees too. They've had, they've had cameras in there. Their concern is, I think, that they want to make sure that they are operating in a manner consistent with law and consistent with their policy. They want to make sure that library services are made available to all of their constituents and it is done in a safe manner, but also that those concerns are done, you know, that their privacy rights are respected. So I think, uh, I think they, they feel a little bit squeezed and concerned here. And I think, look, they want a good rela-, they've had a longstanding relationship with the Woodbury town, the town of Woodbury. I think you had mentioned it goes back some fif- you know, fifty-plus years or maybe even, you know, perhaps even longer. Um, so I, I am, uh, I would advocate that they be given their opportunity, let them, you know, make some decisions, uh, let them have an opportunity to see what, uh, what is being, what, what's being, what the cameras pick up. And, you know, maybe all those cur- concerns will be allayed and, uh, and then, and, and we could then move forward in a very productive manner.
Well, I would say, okay, well, I would hope that you and our attorneys, Joe McKay and Jonathan, would take the chief's invitation, you know, to go down to the police station this evening so that we can get this resolved.
Well, I heard that the cameras aren't recording yet, are they?
No. No.
So we would actually ha- I mean, so I'm happy to, to, to make those arrangements, but I, but I do feel-
Why, why don't we then see when you can make it available? Because we, our intention now, like we just stated, is to start recording on Monday.
Well, I, I would like the library director and the library, and, and any library board member to get, be provided that, you know, opportunity. Because I, I, I think they're the one, they're the audience that needs to be satisfied because they're the ones who are responsible for, um, their patrons and, and the policies, for enforcing the policies, uh, that they have adopted as a lawfully chartered institution.
Lieutenant, do you have a date that you, is it a hard date, Monday, that you are looking to have this recording to start at the Havilah Senior Center?
I, I just randomly chose Monday because I knew we were meeting this evening.
Okay.
I could, I could start any day, really, um, because they're, it's up and running. You know, if they want to come down tomorrow, we can make an arrangement tomorrow. Or if Monday works better for everybody, we can do it on Monday. Whatever, whatever you like. You know, I'm easy.
Well, can you have Sarah come down to view it first and then, and see her approval and then be able to?
I would ask that you would come also, only simply because the different interpretations of, of what trustees may see. I would like, I'm, I'm inviting you to come down and I want you to be able to see it. This way, if they have any other specific questions, it's, it's a different set of eyes. If you represent them, please, come all at once, come one at a time, whatever you want. I, you, you, I welcome you to the building. I welcome to see exactly what we have. I think it'll, it'll probably put a lot of concerns to bed. And, and I would, I would almost insist that you come because you're representing them. And I would like you to come.
Well, Chief, I accept your gracious offer. And I will make arrangements to, to be there as early as Monday, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
And that's okay with Sarah and the board of trustees.
I, I, I'm, I'm anxious. From the police department's point of view, Chief, from the police department's point of view, um, the back and forth, what happened, meetings and other, that's the monitoring, the camera system itself. We just, we just want to get it resolved and, and we want to assure everybody exactly what it is. It's, it's nothing beyond, um, other than the cameras being monitored when someone hits a button. We don't want to sit and watch these cameras eight hours a day. Nobody's watching them, okay? They're not on a, uh, on display in our dispatch area. I invite you to come down and see the whole thing. We have school district cameras. We have cameras of the whole town. Library will not be seen in that area. I invite you down. I, I, I'm, I'm inviting you to come down as soon as you like. And this way, everybody has the assurance that there's no issue whatsoever.
Thank you, Chief. I will make sure I, I will, I will be there in person.
I hope that helps.
We're moving in the right direction.
Did you want me to continue answering the questions?
If you can remember what they were, sure.
I wrote some of them down. Um, okay, so the next question was as to the supervising, hiring, paying salaries, personnel costs of library employees. Um, and as of right now, um, yes, our payroll is processed through the town. Our bookkeeping is processed through the town. That's, from what I understand, not an unusual thing for municipal library. Um, but it doesn't change that, um, you know, municipal library is just like any other public library. And that is that the, um, employees are supervised by the library director and the board. Um-
Town, town also pays for postage?
Correct.
For po- for postage?
Yeah, now.
Well, we do take it out of our budget.
Right.
Um, but however, um, the employees are paid, the other salaries and benefits, they are paid out of library funds. Um, so I think that's important to include.
I, I understand. And I, I think this has raised some, you know, kind of fundamental legal issues as to how this all came about. And it probably did come about fifty years or, I heard, well, I heard the seventies. Is that the best we could come up? Sometime in the nineteen eighties, there was some meeting with the Orange County Department of Personnel. So it is, it is a, a difficult issue. I understand perfectly what you read, Dan, about the library's authority. I, I understand that. And Ms. Johnson, I, I understand your second. How do we move forward with that? That's not, that it's a difficult issue. One of the things that I've been thinking at least is once we get past the camera and the opening of the library, you had asked for a last, last year, that's something that we have to pick up again. And whether or not there's maybe, straight up, if, if the library has no intention to actually become an independent library, have its own independent budget vote, then if that's the case, we both have to get along, right?
Yes, obviously.
You, you, it's like a house divided, right? If you're not going to actually be an independent library, and we had some discussions in the spring about you were setting aside funds to buy your own property and that kind of sparked this discussion about, well, you had one building and you're in our building and what do you want to do? If, if, if the library's going to remain tied at the hip with the town, I, I think that's every, that's some, listen to me, I'm talking for every board member now, but I think that's something that the council feel that, that we have to have something. And for some reason, it worked for fifty years without a thing, right? Now I think we need, we just want a MOA for, you know, because the next step is the town. And you can understand, so we want to install cameras in the Central Valley branch, right? Just, this is how we've adapted. And then your, your library is putting in requests for, you know, maintenance and job orders and things. And, and the, the town's been handling them. And we've been processing all the paperwork to go over to the county. Maybe fifty years ago, somebody should have put their hand up and said, "Oh, no, no, no. The town doesn't do A, B, and C. The library, that's, that's your obligation under the education law." They probably should have done it. If you did. So here we are. So there's gotta be a global agreement as to if, if the library wants the town to continue to, you know, process its payroll or do all those things, everybody has to have it down clear as to who's gonna be responsible for what. Because, because when you think about what happened, it, it really wasn't almost fair to the board. I understand legally how the library says, "Look, you're supposed to supervise the employees." And then somebody has a question and they say, "Oh, well, you know what? Call, call the supervisor or, you know, call Desiree. They, they know." Or, or call one of the ladies at town hall. Or call one of the ladies at town hall, they do this. And then when they get the call and they try to respond, then there's any of them that says, oh, no, you shouldn't be dealing with wrong employees. That's urgent. That really puts everybody up here in a very bad spot. And it certainly did not make any of them feel very good.
Sorry, is it okay if I?
No, sure, because somebody other than me talked tonight, you didn't hear from her.
Yeah, just so I could respond to that, so the email response that you were talking about, that was just one very specific situation?
I, I, yes, I agree with you.
So it wasn't like an ongoing, yeah.
I, I mean, I think what I'm doing is I'm trying to, for the sake of moving this along, I'm trying to pull out, you know, highlight the points that both boards are really stuck on and really need to make headway on very soon.
And I'd also just like to clarify, because you mentioned the library board purchasing property. I just wanna clarify that that was not the intention at all. I think that misunderstanding may have come from our capital fund policy, which, which contains a line that monies from the capital fund could be used to purchase property. And that line was only in there because it's a standard policy, you know, it, it wasn't because of any intention. And the policy was, is just a general policy to list things that could be done with a capital fund generally. So I just wanna.
I understand that, too. I think Dan and I had kind of got a session at the time where, you know, Dan says, look, I'm gonna write this policy broadly so that I don't tie the hands of the library board in the future. That's exactly what you're supposed to do. So I don't have the, you know, you don't have an objection to it, but when you, when you take these series of events and you add them all up, certainly it makes the town board question, what is, what really does the future hold and what does the library intend to do? So I like to have a lot of examples, I pick things from here, pick things from there. And I'm sure you probably have responses to most of that. But globally, again, these things do have to be resolved. And if the library does not intend to become its own independent library, then we're all in for a panic, we're all in for a panic and we have to work this out.
So, did, did you want me to go back to the questions from the board or did we wanna move on?
However you wanna respond, I know I asked you a lot of questions and then I think I got you off. So however you wanna respond, it's fine.
Okay. So I, I guess there's just one more bit because you mentioned the Orange County Civil Service, how we have to ask the town for lists, which is typical of all municipal libraries in the county. It's not like we're the only one. However, there is a, a form, I don't know the name of the form off the top of my head, where the town designates the representatives from the town who are able to call for lists. And what has happened in some other municipal libraries is that they have named the library director on that list to be able to call for lists only for the library. So that's a potential solution to that. I know I have brought it up before, but, you know, if, if we could move forward with that now, that would be helpful. So that's, that's an option for that. And I just wanted to address too, because you had mentioned that the town, the town board's right to install cameras in its own building. And I, I think we all agree that, you know, it's your building, you can do with it what you want. It's just that the library just wanted to make sure that, that the system was something that we would be able to operate in a way that we're supposed to. And so, you know, we would just really like to make sure to have those assurances. As Dan mentioned, having written assurances are really important. And so, yeah.
Yeah, Dan is a trustably verified kinda guy.
I don't think I got to everything, but I, I didn't have anything else written down. All right, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions or any of the topics to discuss from the library? I know that we had some personnel we wanna discuss. I think we have another discussion on the capital fund, so.
I'm on the library board and I just wanna say that I'm literally a regular person who's volunteering on the library board. And as far as I'm concerned, all we've been trying to do is have this dialogue for a very long time. And the one work session that I was at regarding this, Lieutenant Phillips spoke about active shooters, which I fully respect and I, you know, don't have anything negative to say about that. But we were never ever questioning that the library needed to be safe. That was never questioned, that we never said, we don't want the patrons to be, you know, safe and, and free from violence and everything else. All we wanna do is follow the New York state law that we're governed by as a library, that's it. This conversation, I feel like judge, jury, and execution are over here. This is like so fu- we, I, we said a million times, a round table, sit down. I sent an email and said, let's hit a reset, what is this contention? We just wanna do what we're supposed to do by the law and conversations is needed to be had. This conversation, the conversations of, this information that we were given tonight could have been given months ago. I'm sorry?
Well, somebody's.
Are you trying to forget who's in the building? We, if this information was given to us a long time ago, nobody's here for a fight. We all want the same thing, we want the library open, Mr. McKay, and we want patrons to be safe. We're all on the same page here, why couldn't this take place a long time ago? Emails have been sent and ignored. I don't think you ever responded to a single email that I sent. Well, why? Why is it like that? You, you're not above me, I'm not above you, I volunteer my time, I'm a taxpayer, you're a local resident who happens to be supervisor. Fantastic, well, let's all get the stuff done that needs to be done. Why does it have to be months? March is when this came up about the cameras. It's October. It's ridiculous. I respect the dialogue tonight, I appreciate it, but going forward, i- if it's possible that we could keep it real, if I have a question, can I call you?
Absolutely, you can call me.
Are you gonna answer me? Cause I, I've emailed you.
Email, I won't answer on an email. You could go your, as a, as a resident of Woodbury or as a library board member. As a library board member, if I start doing that, it'll, I would prefer if you go through your library director, library board, and you submit it to the legal.
Why? Is that, is that the law?
No, it's no, it's no law, it's no bad, it's no law.
Well, you see, even this conversation, right? Even this conversation, and, and when, when, when Sarah was sitting up here, you bring up postage, really? Postage?
Right, because of what.
But this is, you're nitpicking Supervisor Burke. We, just conversation, that's all this is.
Yes. What I'm trying to say is that we, we will do whatever we can to work together, including the postage and every other thing. We're not saying no to anything, we're not saying you can't come in here, we're not closing doors, we're not saying the library's not allowed. What I'm saying is that we're always open.
Okay.
Okay, and I appreciate your comments and, and hopefully we can because there ha- like, like you've said, I appreciate your comments.
So I wanna ask you a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me just finish what I'm saying, there have been plenty of opportunities for us. Lieutenant Phillips has come and spoken to the library board.
Yes, and we didn't need that conversation, he, he wasted his time because we know about active shooters.
On more than, on more than more, on more than one occasion. And you're saying that we've, that we could have had more dialogue. We did have continuous dialogue and speak to each other, yes, we have.
Are you done?
We will continue.
Are you done?
And we continue because when I'm, look, I waited for you to finish, now I'm speaking, no problem, we can continue, right? When I.
Well, because seven thirty, I think the meeting starts soon, once again.
That's right, yes.
Again, though, you see the work session that we had? Lieutenant Phillips spoke for twenty minutes about active shooters, that took twenty minutes away from what we came to be, a round table. We came to that meeting to have a conversation like this, we could have been over. This could have been over. So now, it's gonna, it's seven twenty-six and I got four minutes. So my point is, okay?
I don't think there's a timeline, Beth.
Isn't there a town board meeting?
Yeah, but that will take place after this is over, or if the board says, or thought that it's seven thirty.
Fair enough, my apologies.
I didn't say anything here about the meeting starting at seven.
Dialogue, guys, I thought seven, I misunderstood, I thought seven thirty, the town board meeting starts. I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
Oh, my train of thought was this. Joji and Zero does not have to email you every time there's a conversation about life values, right? So why do I have to email your board? Why can't I be like, hey, what's the deal with this? Well, I'm a regular person, you're a regular person. If it, if we're talking realities, all right, we have a meeting, you sit down, you have to videotape it, you have to record it. But if I have a question for you, why does it have to be that I have to sit here and wait an hour and a half before I get to speak?
So regarding that, you brought up Lieutenant Brown's director and Mark's director, Joji and Zero,
You don't have to bring up Joji.
Since you brought him up for this and when he has an issue that he wants to discuss, either he calls me or he comes and walks in, speaks to me face to face or when I see him. Now, in regards to the library, I go to the library, both in Havilins and Central Valley on a regular basis. And if anybody there wants to speak to me in the li- at, while I'm at the library, like your library director, I'm there to speak to her and we can have a conversation on any topic at the library. If I see you or you call me, like I just said, we have a conversation, absolutely. Just like I do with Joji and Zero, same thing.
Well, I misunderstood, I thought you said I had to email them.
In fact, I would wel- in fact, I would welcome it, I would welcome it. But I'm saying, I didn't say you had an absolute support, I would give support.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
And that's it, I just, I, it, it's very salient for people in this town that wanna volunteer. Because it feels like, it feels like, like I said, judge, jury, and execution. It, we want, we just want the library to run safely, everybody go to the library, have a good time, read a book. It shouldn't be so difficult to do these things.
I think that the town board, I, I won't speak for anybody, everybody's here to speak for themselves, I, I think that the town board does the same way.
Okay.
Right?
I hope so.
Sure.
It seems like we were a little bit attacked, that's all, a little bit, you know, a little bit. Like you and Tyler, it's like, come, everybody's coming back, coming back at each other. It's not about, why do we have to come at each other? Why can't we just get the job done? Why should it be so difficult, that's all.
Beth, I have to say that I agree with you about the dialogue, but like, just like Tom said, I do agree. I feel like you guys feel that way and I, I speak with the board and, you know, we came to the meeting that time. And then being on the town board, you feel it and it's like you're, for me, being in, you know, kind of in the middle, hearing it. And, you know, we have tried to have discussions and things have been pushed to the side with, you know, whether an attorney couldn't come or a meeting was canceled and, you know, trying to reschedule and that, and I agree with you. I didn't understand why we couldn't sit down at a round table. I get that then things aren't, you know, documented and whatever, so it's important to have that in a meeting like this, which we would, but we should, you know. I think, like, just like you said, it was very difficult and it's difficult on both sides. And you may feel attacked, but the town board can feel attacked also and I think that's why it's important to have meetings like this. So we can put it out there and all get on the same page. Because exactly what you said, when you break it down to everything, it's like, what does everybody want? They want the library open, you know, they want activities for their kids, you know? We have to do it in a way where we're not fighting each other all the time, where it's not, you know, you can't do this, you can't do that, you know.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, it was like, you know, me or something.
Desiree, you go for Chinese food?
No, ladies, ladies, and Chinese food is out for window now.
Um, yeah, so I think it's important that we do that and we keep the dialogue going and we talk to each other and not this inner bickering, fighting and feeling that somebody's trying to hurt someone else or, you know, what, what's behind, you know, this comment or, you know, I, I think it's really important, yeah.
Open dialogue. I appreciate you guys because I appreciate the information you gave, it makes it so much more likely as far as the situation is.
Okay, thank you for saying that. And the last meeting that I had with Lieutenant Phillips was a good one, where he, we were sitting at a table, he explained things and one of the things I said to him is that, one thing is I'll never forget his name because he's the same name as my son-in-law, Kevin Phillips. So, and what I said to him at the end of that meeting, which was contentious at times, but it was a good meeting, was I really felt that this meeting was brought to you by the letter C, communication. And I feel that that's really not happening sometimes. And that knowing that you guys are not memorializing, we had no idea. No one ever told us, sometimes it's kind of what Beth was saying, pick up a phone, let us know. It's weeks and weeks of back, back and forth emails, crickets on a lot of your side, truly. I mean, you know, we don't get a lot of responses, like Beth said, she puts out these emails. Now we know, we need to call rather than email, we'll do that from now on. But we're all in the same boat, we all want what's best, you know, and I think, I think I said this to Dan the last time we met. Woodbury is a great place, we have wonderful parks, we have great people. And I really think the library, of course, I'm prejudiced, is it's one of the crown jewels in our town. And I think that we need to, as a community, try to make it as, as good as we can. And the library has really exploded. You can't open up any kind of Facebook page without seeing a program. And even though we're short-staffed, we're making it work. And I think that we just need to realize that we're all rowing the same boat, we want what's best for our community. And we do have to be brought to you by the letter C, communication. That's all I have to say and I learned a lot tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so it's not on our agenda, but I think we're gonna take a five-minute break, just in case anybody has anything to add.
So we, Mr. Supervisor, are we putting back into the work session after that?
No, we're gonna start the meeting. Does anybody have another question regarding the work session of the meeting? Does anybody have another question?
Tom, I think I'm gonna ask for the one that she, that she asked about putting the library director on the list to be able to call. Can we do something like that as a sign, we'd happily, we talk as a board and.
And Mr. Supervisor, please be able to answer my question. If there's a way, I, I just have a suggestion. You know, the library board members and this kind of are gonna go, move the system and get the, get to work, if that's great. I, I, I think it would be appropriate if the library board did change the posting on the door. The posting right now, if you read it in context, seems to say that the town, I believe the town board has done something wrong. I think it would be a long way if the library board has just simply changed the language on the signs to say something like, you know, there are, there are bell service hours temporarily, whatever it might say. I think that would be appropriate and that's just my last comment.
Just that, I believe that, you know, as long as the cameras are not recording and active, then we can just take them down, so.
All right, Lieutenant Phillips, you wanna?
Just, just to touch base on one thing. I know that when we spoke on April seventh and I made the presentation up at the firehouse for the meeting, one of the things I went through about security cameras, how they can be used for not only security, but also, you know, to prevent lawsuits, one of the things I did say that night is about establishing signs on your front door. And one of the signs, you could have them read, that your library records are confidential. Please note that security cameras are in use and may only be used for security purposes. Security cameras are maintained by the town of Woodbury Police Department. These cameras will not be regularly monitored unless there is a reason to consult them. We will not be viewing the footage per patron's request. They will be obtained by our police department and consulted only in cases where criminal acts are committed. I've mentioned that back in April and I think that's a perfect sign. I took that off of other libraries that have those signs posted out front. But always feel free to let your patrons know as it is, which I said that night, I said at the round table, and I'll stay here. Within five minutes of leaving your front door, you're on camera somewhere. Cameras are everywhere, people are recording everywhere. And I think if you let your patrons know that they're. And I think if you let your patrons know that they're being monitored as they walk into your building, I think it will be ultimately later down the road a welcome joy to know that their security and their safety is paramount to the Woodbury public employees. Thank you very much.
Sorry, can I just?
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Phillips.
Yes, I just want to clarify quickly that, um, we do have signage on both of our buildings that the buildings are under video surveillance. Um, and we do also have a video surveillance policy that lists a lot of, um, a lot of what Lieutenant Phillips just mentioned as well. Um, but of course, you know, with the addition of using the cameras, um, some of the language he mentions is different than is what is in our current policy, but we do have a policy and we do have notification. Thank you.
Can you just confirm the laws on the library state that the police have to provide subpoena for any of those records? So how would that work?
Uh, and with anything, I don't, I don't think it's a, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, we have.
And Joe, you can help me with this. I, I don't think it, it has to do with a law for the, for the Woodbury Police Department. It's anytime anybody wants to get any footage regarding a criminal matter, it has to be subpoenaed. So if we were going to, which I've told Sarah in the past, that if we were going to use any footage from our cameras that are in your building, I would have to notify Sarah as the director that I'm subpoenaed, or somebody subpoenaed that specific footage. It would have to be court ordered, and it would be from a judge.
Okay, 'cause at the, my notes, I don't have them here, but at the April seventh meeting, you said a subpoena is not necessary, the records are now mine.
I, I don't think I've ever said that.
There's a line up ahead.
But, but it, I mean, it, it, I might have meant that, not mine as Kevin Phillips, that the records are being recorded in the town of Woodbury.
The more important statement was the subpoena is not necessary.
For any criminal matter, for those tapes and those camera use on public record here, in order to be used in a criminal matter, all records have to be subpoenaed.
I know that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, April seventh, that's not necessary.
I'm, I don't remember, but I might have misinterpreted that. I'm sorry. Am I, am I right on that, Counselor?
Yes. Yes.
Yep, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
So now, and Rob's gonna walk and get the towel.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And that's it, and then, and the brackets, what's the?
Yes, we want to be able to see them. If you want to come in Monday, you know, if, 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 no, you figure it out, you let me know, and then I'll be.
No worries. Um, you have to agree to that.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
Tom, good to see you again.
Finally a person, I've only seen you on Zoom.
So I guess that gives us a cool product, so I guess part of it, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Everything in Monroe, they, they, 'cause they own, they own all of it, they can do it, you know? See, we're, we're different.
Most pleasure to meet you.
Governor's very smart.
Beth said, said.
This is a different man.
To put the brackets on the, on the, you have to, are they rotting?
Yo, so your question was this. Sorry, you don't own a signal. And so they, so it was like, you had to go to them and ask permission.
Yes.
Watch that, watch that step when you go out. Sarah, watch that step. That's a great step. Oh, hey, I, um, we put that tree thing up to you today over there.
How are you? Good, good to see you.
They had something to put book bags on, or something.
Essentially, you're, so it's, you certainly got your, 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 your work cut out for you to have the audio here, but, you know?
They need to talk closer to the mic.
Yeah.
You know, about six inches, it stills not picked up.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the ones at our village hall, like, they pick up everything, you know? Like they, you know, it's like, make sure, like, you know, especially during the twenty-four maze, put your hand over it.
Yeah.
You don't have anything picked up that you don't want on the record. You know, you have a set of questions or anything like that, but.
So we're gonna look at, I told, uh.
It's good to see you.
I see you tomorrow, or, I know Monday's close to noon.
Hey, how are you?
I think we're, I think we're square.
Anyway, I don't wanna keep you. It's good to see you, though.
Yeah, same here.
They checked all the, um, so filters, they said they're fine, and we're okay. So, but I think everything to UX is done, so, alright, just let me know, right? See you later.
Makes sense, so you're. Holiday decorations are usually not under a light. Which makes sense. Right. The flags go up wherever. Rob and his Ben want some of the flags. I don't bother them. I buy them, put them up, and that's. Not me personally, I can't buy them.
Well, first you gotta get the brackets. And here, you put, I, again.
If there's brackets up, well, those are universal brackets, or they're just for the Christmas lights.
Because the banners are different, the banners have. What do you mean, the lodges? And they're for school, and then when you put them in, the banner poles have to be like this. Because if they're not like that, if you put them in this way, the banners fall off. They have to be held this way, because that makes it tighter, so they don't fly away. And there's a certain degree of.
So you've done, you said you didn't have them there? No, 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 not before, and we've done it since. Not in the Christmas, I know the.
Because the poles, the banners, they weren't put up correctly.
So is the contract in twenty twenty-three?
Coincidence, because the village code has. Because we're trying to stay, we just don't want.
It's a, it's a, it's a global issue, everything. You know, hard is camping, you don't let the tackle the chickens up, who are you?
The banner on the.
But who's gonna go, the problem is, who's gonna go do it, and again.
To what, physical?
Who physically gets to? Just my brothers roll down there. When I took, we didn't have a contract since the end of twenty-twenty. And we were in twenty twenty-two, I took off in February. We gotta take four months. Yeah, it was retro. You know, I mean, it wasn't, nobody was happy, right?
Oh my God.
Unless how.
And you were amazing, but then turned on, you know why? I don't know why. How does that make?
He said he was, he was gonna get a job through this station. Yeah, that's not good with Anthony, but he's.
My wife, like, she gets pulled over, lights on, she doesn't like it.
There you go. I just wanna tell you one thing. God rest his soul, we love the John Smith day here. 'Cause you need to pick a. I saw you come in, I go, if not, maybe like, tell you who the air fan.
That's right.
Jeff, you ready?
Yeah.
Did you stop or no?
No.
Alright, folks. Wanna start with, uh, anybody here with, uh, would like to start with any public comment on the, on the agenda items? Okay, I want to see anybody getting up, so. Move on to agenda items, administrative business acceptance of the minutes for October sixth. Uh, I need a motion, and a second to accept the receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on October sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passed. And then approval of abstract, Desiree, please read abstract, revised abstract nine.
Revised abstract nine, void voucher twenty-two zero seven zero six, check number two-five-five-nine-two, in the amount of three hundred fifty dollars, which reduces the total of the abstract to be seven hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and two cents.
Alright, uh, I need a motion and second to approve the revised, um, abstract nine, Desiree?
Make a motion, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Desiree, uh, please read abstract nineteen.
Abstract nineteen contains vouchers two-two zero seven zero six and two-two one-seven-three-four through two-two one-eight oh six, totaling three hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and four cents.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion and second to approve abstract nineteen? Make a motion.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, I have budget modifications, Desiree, please read those.
Yes, there are six this evening. First is for the police department by increasing B thirty-one twenty point two zero nine K nine vehicle by fifty-nine thousand three dollars and fifteen cents, and decreasing B ninety-sixty point eight hundred health insurance by fifty-nine thousand three dollars and fifteen cents. Next is for the library by decreasing L seventy-four ten point four-six-four equipment maintenance by two hundred dollars, L seventy-four ten point four-zero-three, heating, oil and gas by two thousand dollars, L seventy-four ten point one hundred personal services by seven thousand dollars, L seventy-four ten point four-two-nine special programs by one thousand dollars, and increasing L seventy-four ten point four hundred contractual expenses by two hundred dollars, L seventy-four ten point four-zero-one telephone by two thousand dollars, L seventy-four ten point four oh seven legal by seven thousand dollars, L seventy-four ten point four-two-eight children's programs by one thousand dollars. And next is for the town clerk's office by increasing A fourteen ten point four eleven office supplies by seven hundred dollars, A fourteen ten point four thirty transportation and travel by two hundred fifty dollars, A fourteen ten point four 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 schools and dues by two hundred dollars, and decreasing A fourteen ten point four zero one telephone cellular by fifty dollars, A fourteen ten point four three five law book supplements by one thousand one hundred dollars. And next is for the police department by increasing B thirty-one twenty point two zero two equipment surveillance by three hundred fifty dollars, and decreasing B thirty-one twenty point four seventy alarm surveillance maintenance by three hundred fifty dollars. And the next is for the buildings and grounds and parks department by increasing A sixteen twenty point four seven one police station repairs only by five thousand dollars, decreasing A sixteen twenty point four one four architect engineer, Earl E A P and improvements by five thousand dollars, increasing A sixteen twenty point four two one John Burke pool maintenance and repairs by ten thousand dollars, decreasing A seventy-one ten point three-six thirty chemicals by ten thousand dollars. The last is for various funds within the general fund by increasing A ten ten point four one five special prosecutor by six thousand dollars, A ten ten four five three animal gas by seven thousand three hundred dollars, A ninety eighty-nine point eight hundred other benefits eyeglasses by eighty dollars, A nineteen twenty point four hundred municipal association dues by one hundred eighty-nine dollars, A fourteen seventy point four hundred oral assessment dues by eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents, and decreasing A ten ten point four thirty town board transportation and travel by one thousand, A nineteen fifty point four hundred, taxes on town property by two thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars, A ten ten four four four, town board schools and dues by five hundred dollars, and A nineteen forty point eight hundred workers compensation by nine thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty cents. Hey, you are.
So, um, just so you guys know, the first modification is to provide a new vehicle for the police department equipped as a canine vehicle. The modification for the library is what the board approved at its September twenty-seventh meeting. The modification for the town clerks to cover some unexpected expenditures. The second modification for the police is to allocate the fee required for Orange and Rockland to install a camera on their pole located at the corner of Smith Cove Road and Route thirty-two. The next modification is to replace the main heating line at the police station and the electrical panel at the John F. Burke pool. The last modification is to cover various expenditures in the town board budget, employee benefits and various others. So I need a motion and a second to approve the modifications, is right?
I make a motion, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passed. I have an acceptance of resignation, retirement for Pam and Booty. Uh, we have a motion and a second to, to accept with regrets the resignation, retirement of Pamela and Booty. I have a motion and a second to accept with regrets the resignation, retirement of Pamela and Booty for the position of animal patrol officer, shelter manager, with her last day of work being November fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Any motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Appointment of part-time dispatchers. Chief, you're gonna have to help me with Gasp and Eel.
It's Peter. Gasp. Pah.
Gasp.
I thought Peter.
And. And Nick was Seymour. Right. To the position of the part-time dispatcher at an hourly rate of twenty-four dollars, seventy cents and a start date of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Any discussion? Any motion?
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I have an appointment of full-time dispatcher, Brittany Boyle. Before I read it, I'm gonna go off a little bit from our usual. Yes. We're gonna have, I want the chief to come up and say a few words. This is special. Okay. She's got mom. This is. Right? Is on now?
Yes.
Yes? No? No.
Light on?
The light.
Check this.
There you go. Okay. Um. Thank you very much. Brittany came to our department over a year ago. She was a part-time dispatcher in another department. She came to us. She is fantastic. She's on time. I've never had any issues with her. She attends P B A events. It was the hockey games. She's a welcome addition and a long-term solution to our dispatch corps. And I welcome her on wedding. It's an active family. I need a motion and a second to promote Brittany Boyle to the position of full-time dispatcher on the A-line with an hourly rate of twenty-six dollars, seven. Bo, Bo. I'm sorry. Bo. Bo. Lionel. Bo. At, for a rate of twenty-six dollars, seventy-four cents and a start date of November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion.
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And all in favor? Brittany, welcome. Thanks.
You want pictures taken, chief?
Chief.
Want pictures taken?
Yes. Take a quick one.
You know.
Lieutenant.
No, no. We'll do it in, do it at the station. On the phone on the.
Okay.
I'm.
Oh.
Sorry. Call me.
Yeah.
Just.
All right. Um.
Unless you want it tonight. Entirely.
For months.
But you look crap. We look. We can do it together. Come on. Come on. Come on. We'll do it now.
Come on.
See that? Come on.
You thought you were your dad. You're on time tonight. You're almost.
Mom wants pictures. Come on. Yes.
You gotta.
I got some.
Come in.
Look at this.
Come in.
Come in. That was bad. That was bad.
That's what I do. I get my picture taken. I suck it in.
It's all about the angle.
That's it.
Yeah. Okay.
Is it cold in here?
Yeah.
I closed the door. It was left open. So it was cold.
One, yes. And everyone else in.
I said.
I'm sorry.
I'm.
I'm.
Forget it.
Turn the heat off.
No, not. He is.
Someone let that, our door open.
Look. You know. You should. I've already said I'm not cold. I'm not cold.
It's forty-six outside.
All right. So moving along, we're gonna have a change of internal title, hourly rate for Ms. Jacqueline Vidal. I need a motion second to change the internal title of Jacqueline Vidal to head dispatcher with an hourly rate of thirty-three dollars and sixty cents and a start date of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Okay. Um. Any discussion?
Sorry. Did Tim second that entirely?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And motion passed. Very good. Old business. I don't think we have anything tonight. And new business. Resolution support to veto state legislation S seven-six-eight slash A one-one-one-eight. I need a, uh, uh. The state correspondence received, um, I have, I have, I'm gonna receive, uh, from the village's workers' compensation carrier, Perma, requesting the village to send a letter urging, the town, sorry. I'm sorry. The town. To send a letter urging the government to veto bill, Senate bills, S seven-six-eight slash Assembly Bill, A one-one-one-eight. This bill would establish a definition for temporary total disability and if adopted would negatively impact their budget, uh, conflict with collective bargaining agreements and create obstacles slash disincentives for injured workers to return to work. The new provision would convert most temporary partial disability benefits temporarily to temporary total disability, raising the benefit level for every injured worker to two-thirds of their average weekly rate, tax rate up to a weekly max of eleven twenty-five, one thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. This bill, if signed, will likely result in the town incurring a significant increase in benefit costs. Need a motion and a second to authorize me to send a letter to the governor and council in support of vetoing the legislation.
Make a motion.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Tonight.
Tonight.
All right. Can't wait.
Run.
All right. The next, I authorize the supervisor to sign I M A renewal for A C O services with Monroe. I need a motion and a second to authorize myself to sign the two thousand twenty-three intermunicipal agreement with the town of Monroe for animal control services.
Make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And authorize the supervisor to sign the I M A renewal, the dial-a-buses services with Monroe. I need a motion and a second to authorize myself to sign the two thousand twenty-three intermunicipal agreement with the town of Monroe for dial-a-bus services. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Very good. Signing of tax collector bond for two thousand twenty-three collection. The board members need to sign the bond for the tax collector slash tax collector for the collection of property taxes in two thousand twenty-three. This is required to be filed with the town clerk. Um, this is with, with the county clerk, by the town clerk, for the collection warrant to be issued.
So you're just gonna sign. This.
Just me right across?
Yep.
Where?
Anyway. You're just signing it. You're gonna let.
Where?
Yeah. Right across.
Come on.
And then pass it down. Then all of the.
Oh, well.
All of it. Tell me. Tell me. In quiet. Thank you. And then. Get it back in. Joe doesn't have to sign it though.
Derek, you go.
You are.
I'm gonna continue on then. So, uh, to authorize the supervisor to sign the C D I Z agreement, fixed asset report. I have a motion second to authorize myself to sign the agreement with C D I Z for them to prepare the fixed asset report for the two thousand twenty-two records. I need a motion and a second. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that, but, uh, somewhere along the line, I think we should check to see what our assets are.
Yeah.
Do you get the report? I'm sorry. You get a report sent to you over here?
Yes. Does he go out and check to see what we have?
No. It's provided by us. My, my office provides some of the information from vouchers throughout the entire year.
Right.
So each department gets a report. It's quite a procedure. I'm sure Joe and Kevin can relate. They get a report from my office detailing every asset listed on that report. They have to review that report, tell me what needs to be added or deleted.
Okay.
And then we send that to C Ds and they do the.
Frank. Everybody. Check.
Well, the former supervisor, I was incorrect in his information.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Okay.
All right. I need a motion. All right. A second. All, any discussion? All in favor? Does it?
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion passed. All right. Extra item, natural gas bids. The town's energy consultant, M and R Energy Resources Corporation conducts a bid on natural gas supplies for the town. They receive, receive bids for an eighteen-month time period. Direct Energy slash N R G was at point eighty-two, uh, point five four two cents. Marathon was point, uh, E six, point two-two, and N G was point zero E five six five zero. I need a motion and a second to award the contract to Direct Energy, which would be at the lower rate of point zero E two. Where the other two, Marathon was zero eight-six and N G was zero three-five. So the contract, Direct Energy, N R G, was zero E two.
Make a motion.
So. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The former reports, supervisors' report, please. Desiree, can you read the supervisor's report?
All right, all in favor?
Uh.
All right, um, motion to pass. Town, I mean, you see the town clerk report for September two thousand twenty-two, animal control report, the police communications report, buildings and grounds report for September. Also, parks and recreation committee in September, uh, police commission minutes, none. Library director report for September twenty-two, library board minutes, September twenty-seventh, beautification committee minutes, September first, two thousand twenty-two, and the budget versus actual, September twenty-two. So we're going to receive the board and accept this question. Okay, we're gonna open it up now, public comment, anybody in the audience who'd like to get up?
Sure.
Good evening, Rachel Bruce, Tyler Mills. Um, I have, I just wanted quickly just express my gratitude to, uh, well, first of all, congratulations to the dispatcher. Well, uh, oh. Well, I apologize, sorry. Well, congratulations to the dispatcher, uh, uh, what, um, I wanted to just say quickly, I say congra- uh, congratulations and farewell to Pam Cambooty. Um, Pam is amazing at her job, and I think that's no, that's no secret to any of us. Um, my family had the opportunity to work with Pam a lot over the last number of years with all the, uh, the kittens that mysteriously appear in our yard. And, um, she got every single one of those cats adopted and to good loving homes, and she certainly won't be missed, but I also wish Sarah the best of luck going forward. So, thank you so much, Rachel.
Thank you. Anybody in back, go ahead.
Let me go?
Go ahead, ladies first.
Ladies first.
Maria Hunter, um, first of all, Trumpet Tree, October thirty-first, which is Halloween night. It's a Monday night, Central Valley Elementary School, six to eight. Second bike, right, Chambers, Trumpet Tree? Excuse me, yes, Woodbury Chamber, Trumpet Tree. And I'm, I'm sure we'll see the police, ambulance fire there, town board members come on down, meet and greet everybody, it should be a fun night. I'm not sure how, last count, I knew there were about eight trunks that I knew about, that was a couple of weeks ago. So, everyone, please come on down, join us and weigh your costos. Um, on another note, I want to thank the work session tonight. Some of it was repetitive, and I was at a meeting when Lieutenant Phillips gave all the information with some of the library board members there. Selected here, selected remembering, but Lieutenant, I want to thank you, the chief, I want to thank you for doing what you've done. And at that meeting, I said it was a, a safety thing, and the town board, enough on that. But Joe, also thank you for your come, ease and everything, some of the questions were not answered. I'm going to submit a, an email to Des Moines, I want to ask, pass it on to the board members and to you. Because I'm sure all the concerns I have on this list, I'm not gonna go over tonight, I'm sure there's something that needs to be worked out between Central Valley and the town board. But I, I'm, I'm not gonna go over that list. Um, also, everyone, if you have a chance, drive by the senior center, Hallowell's Library Building. Four of us were there for four and three hours, um, all the decorations are up, they look gorgeous. Thank you to whomever decorated Central Valley Library, also thank you, if you haven't seen the Hallowell Senior Center, the town buildings and grounds, they did a decoration, I put pictures up on Families of Woodbury, um, it's a start. So I want to thank everyone for doing what they've done. And this board, you've got my support, and I'm there, and I, it's just amazing. Because I've been doing some research on who owns Central Valley Library in the county and the way everything is listed. It's very interesting, and I'm sure, Joe, you can probably attest it, it's very interesting the way everything is listed, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was attorney Joe McGee.
Good job, Joe.
Joey, can we pick a room?
Just gotta raise them.
Brendan Calori, Hallowell's, uh, just want to let everybody know that the Woodbury's Park and Recreation Committee is presenting the two thousand twenty-two Halloween at the Earl Reservoir, Saturday, October twenty-ninth, from two to five. There's gonna be refreshments, goodie bags and pumpkins, uh, costume parade, balloon animals, arts and crafts, and there'll be Halloween story from the, uh, from the library. Um, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Committee, I'd like to thank the beautification committee, the library board, the buildings and grounds, and Woodbury Arts Council, and the Parks and Rec- my fellow Parks and Recreation Committee members, uh, for putting this all together. So, thank you very much for all that. I also want to wish Pam well.
I was just gonna ask you, what time is that again at three?
Two to five.
Two to five. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, again, I want to wish Pam well on her retirement, congratulations. Uh, we got three cats from her recently, I thought we were only getting two, but we ended up with three. Wife and daughter pulled a fast one on me. Uh, my daughter did volunteer up on there, out there at several occasions, so, you know, Pam was, uh,
That's what you get.
It was great to work with, so.
That's what you, that's what you get, an extra cat.
Yeah. Well, there was two, twins, and then there was this cat named Bob, and you can't leave Bob behind, you know, Bob had to come home. So, but, uh, anyway, congratulations on the retirement, and hope to see everybody at the Earl Reservoir, uh, twenty-ninth, two to five.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, my name's Sue Lynch, um, I'm here tonight because I've been, uh, wanted to come back and talk to you guys about, um, the rez. In, uh, July twenty-twenty, I brought the exist- um, to the attention of park director, the existence of the invasive water, um, invasive species of plant in the rez. At that time, Joe had the, uh, lifeguards go ahead and do a quick call, two days after I let them know all about it. So that was a very, um, great response. Nothing further than that's even was done. Um, the following fall, we wrote the annual report, we have a plan to continue with removal, with monitoring and mapping of hotspots. It's in that annual report from twenty-twenty, and it was actually carried over in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, um, parks, removal report and, uh, goals for this year. Um, I have seen no evidence of any further work being done to remove the, um, watershed stuffs. This might seem like, you know, a very small issue to you, and it starts out that way. But invasive species are invasive, that's why they're called that. Um, these things multiply and may take over lakes, like Monbusha had the issue, Monroe dealt with it. Um, from my understanding, they had to spend quite a big chunk of change to have the remediation done. If you go to Mary Harriman Park, you will look at that lake, and that thing is over completely. The quality of the water is done, like, there's still animals there, but, I mean, it's going on unchecked. I don't know what Harriman has done to the plant. In August of twenty-twenty-one, I reached out to New York State Trail Conference to try and get some help, because nothing was done, being done at the local level. I was very quickly given a response, um, because my inquiry was forwarded to, um, the Lower Hudson Valley Prism Department. And I got a response from them, directing me to reach out to them, that they could conduct a survey of the lake and provide a report of management recommendations that would be sent to the town officials and the park director. Um, they would also come and provide, if we provided access to the lake, then they would come and actually come and remove the water chestnuts for us. For nothing, for no charge. Um, I don't have any evidence that anything further was done with this information. I know that it was shared, because it's in the minutes from, uh, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, that Mary Kirkkuh shared the email that I sent her, I forwarded her that information back then. Joe, in the minutes, said he would follow up with them. Um, this past January, I spoke to, I communicated with the current chair of the Parks Department to check in, to see what was going on with the whole initiative. And I was told that he believed it was addressed, and that he would follow up. And he said that the plan was in place.
Go ahead.
And then he got back to me, um, and said that he was informed that as of now, but it was January, they were dead. And that if they spring up again, a call would be made to Prism to address it. Um, I don't have any indication, because nothing happened this past season, that anything was followed up on, on that. Um, I have photographed their unchecked growth since I noticed them in the rez. I can tell you, just walking over the bridge, the first year, there were a couple little patches of it. The second year, probably twenty-five percent of the bridge, there was evidence of growth. This year, it's along the entire edge of that, that bridge. And that doesn't even, like, speak to the entire rest of the perimeter of the lake. You're gonna lose it. It's gonna be gone, and you are not gonna be able to help go to it, nor people coming to fish, or stocking it with trout. And you might laugh that it's not, you know, a big deal, but it's only been three seasons since I have noticed that it's going on. One plant drops fifteen seeds, those seeds are viable for twelve years. Go look it up online, you know, it gets there, I mean, so, that's all I have to say. It doesn't seem like anybody is really concerned, and it's been three years of seasonal, of seasons of growth. I, I really hope that somebody here, that this is not gonna fall on deaf ears again, now that it's being recorded, and it's actually on the record, that maybe somebody will pay attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for your comments, I'd just like to, um, say very quickly in response to the presentation that you gave, I want to personally thank both, um, our Parks Committee Chairman, Mr. Brendan Calori, and I'd like to thank, of course, our, our Parks, uh, the, um, Director, Joe Jean Zarrow, for the unbelievable work that they do. I know that I have been present for three occasions where those two gentlemen have reached out to the Monroe Mayor and Mr. Brendan Dwyer, and we have had site visits at the reservoir with him regarding the, uh, chestnut, um, the, the growth, and how the, i- it's starting to get, um, it's starting to grow, like you just stated. And, um, we are in the process now of waiting a short period of time to lower the water level, and then we are looking to have them over to help address us with this, these concerns and other concerns. Um, it has, it's not gonna fall on deaf ears. Uh, one thing we have done over the past is, is keep our eye on it, and, uh, it's just something that we do discuss on a regular basis, and, um, I don't know if Brendan wants to step up, but I don't want to ask Joe tonight, because I know it's for his need, if he doesn't have to, I don't want him to, but Brendan, you wanna come up?
I mean, you know, we discussed it.
Put the microphone, yeah. Because this is an issue, uh, like, that residents do see it also, and they come and they bring it to our attention, but I don't want them to think that any of that is falling on deaf ears.
I haven't seen it in any of the minutes, that's fine about that.
No, you know, we, we.
We've had onsite, like I said, it's not.
As part of the annual inspections that we do, we started it back in March. Um, it was, I believe, the, the exact quote was, I believe there's a plan in place, and again, as a volunteer on the committee, you know, I go through my Parks Director, and we coordinate everything from there. Uh, and Joey was very thorough in what he wanted to do, as far as dropping the water level, like you just said, and, uh, you know, moving forward with the plan, so I do, I do see something happening in the future.
Yep, well, just so you know, we have to go to it in the minutes now, okay, Joe? That's great.
We could have brought a microphone too.
Forgot, you know, I probably.
It is, uh, Sue did mention this a couple of years ago, absolutely, we did have lifeguards pulling two years ago, we had a little bit done this year. Uh, Monroe did spend a lot of money, I think that machine that they got is like sixty-something thousand dollars. They did come over, uh, to try to do it for us, but they couldn't get the machine off the trail. Our ramp is not steep enough, so we made it, we said to them, can you come in the spring? And they said they're gonna come in the spring, when we lower the water, we'll get some of the stuff that's by the, by the, uh, swimming area, we'll get dug out, and we'll make the ramp dig deeper for them, or incline steeper. So they're gonna come in the springtime, and they're gonna do the whole lake for us with their machine. Their machine that goes in and goes underneath and picks it up, and then they carry it out, and they put it on the shore, and then we'll take it away. So we do have a plan in place for the spring, but when we lower the lake, we'll get some of it out of here as much as we can. But then when we, when they come back next year, when we, when we raise the lake up, they'll come in, they're gonna take care of it. They figure two days, and they'll have the whole lake cleaned up for us, so that is a plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Sure, well, not forget.
This one is telling me thunder. I want to talk about, I want to give you the paper, I heard it.
But Joe, do you have anything else or not? Tonight?
Oh, I have.
We'll bring you a microphone, guys.
He needs to walk.
He needs to walk.
Joe, you can do it.
He's gotta keep the legs moving, he's gotta keep that foot so he's.
Um, I know Tom talked about some of them, um, you know, change, uh, whatever. Just so you guys, I'm just gonna give you a little, uh, uh, history. One is for the police station, they have a, uh, a leak in the heat pipe, it's a big two-inch pipe. So we have to replace that, but to replace that, they have to drain the whole system, and once you drain the system, expansion tanks are gonna go, because the rubber's been, you know, the expansion tanks and the boilers, so they gotta change a lot of other parts. So that's one of the, the change orders for that. At the pool, it's a big electrical panel that went, so that's why that change order for ten thousand dollars went to that. And it's ordered, and we'll ha- we probably won't get it until January or February, but it has to be ordered. Uh, the manufacturers making it, and they're gonna bring a guy down here, and, uh, with their lumps, and they're gonna put that in. So that's what that is all about. Um, we're starting cleanups, um, we're out there every day starting to mow it, we're probably okay, we should be pretty much set. Um, and again, we'll start putting our stuffs out, pumpkins and stuff, and next week we'll have the Halloween. And, um, unless you guys have any questions or anything else.
Yep, were the pool cover, the echo line?
Pool, no, not yet, the, um, I, I, I believe there's a meeting on Monday, I don't know, I didn't get the email. They were gonna, I don't know if they were, they were gonna, they emailed us the other day that they want to have a meeting the next day in the morning. We weren't, you know, nobody was available. So they're coming this week, uh, they leave on Monday. Um, on Saturday, TKC is coming, uh, this is for you, um, Tyler, they're gonna do the, um, what's that stuff called?
They're gonna treat the lawn?
Yes, they're gonna treat the lawn, he's coming, uh, we're gonna open up the door for him, we'll have one of the buildings and grounds guys working, they'll, well, top could work too, they'll, you know, both places. So they're gonna treat the lawn, but on Monday, we have another meeting, uh, with, with Maymine, so we might have an update of where the cover is and where we're gonna go. So, that's what it is.
Thanks, Joe, how you feeling?
I'm doing good, thank you.
With those knees, come on, put those legs, come on, put them.
Okay, so, I'll move on to department comments, police lieutenant, police chief, thank you for tonight, you guys have a lot to say. We're good, should I guess, attorney McKay?
Yeah.
Talk to nothing.
It's up to the, it's up to the chief, did we answer it?
No.
No, all right.
I have a, I have a question, everybody. Um, could you have a brief, brief discussion this afternoon? About whether the board will take Dasha's reservation, the water reservation, and if it's a summons?
Yes, for the, um, animal control, for tickets going to court.
Is that something we need to do tonight, or not?
No, we have, um, the resignation is not till November, so we can wait till our next, uh, oh. You know what, before I say anything, did I have, um, Ms. Nicole?
Yes, come on. You have to come up.
I did, you have a spot. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We gotta take it by Nicole, you know.
So I wanted to go up. Go ahead, Joe, uh, attorney McKay, you could ask Ms. Nicole. You call her Nicole?
Nicole, uh, Vice of Counsel Nicole, answer the supervisor's question.
Go ahead, Joe, you were, you wanted to ask about the, um, the, the ACO tickets.
Oh, okay.
I know that you have a lot to do, you handle those things. Are you in, uh, okay with us waiting until early November, our next meeting, to designate, um, when Sarah Parker will be starting her, as a full-timer, or could possibly designate her to go to the court with the tickets?
Uh, my only question was, can Pam issue the next of tickets, and she'll still be her position, because court would be like three months from then?
Right, thank you, because I didn't, that's why I asked this more. Could, could she, someone will be retiring.
I would say, I, I would say no, because since she has prosecuted her own summonses in the past, really, there'll be nobody there, capable there to prosecute her.
So now that brings the next question.
I'm sorry, the next question's tonight.
No, the next question is, what happens to the tickets that have currently been issued by Ms. Cambooty?
Were they, were they based upon her own personal knowledge?
The tickets, to be clarified, are for dogs that are not licensed, because people have not renewed their dog licenses, and they're from five months past, after many mailings and many phone calls have been made to try to get the individual to renew.
Okay, in that, in that case, I would say that they can still be prosecuted, because they're not solely based on her observations, they're based on town records, and, and other people can testify to that.
So the ones that she has issued, to be clear, the ones that she has issued already can stand, or, so, what did you call the phone, Lieutenant Watson?
You have two options.
Chief Watson says they can be reissued by, by possibly Sarah, as of November seven.
Well, that's true too, that's the other option they can reissue.
Okay.
It's similar to what, uh, uh, whatever.
So, it's also not just Sarah Parker, also Cameron Hudson, also both of them have the same, like, full-time, it's not, it's both.
Okay.
Is that good? Yeah?
So you're gonna wait till November?
We're waiting November.
And you can, you can have, you can change the, and, and some of these reissues, that's, that's still happening.
Okay, well, we, thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Right, Councilman, thank you.
Uh, I don't have much, I just want to congratulate Pam and other common, thank you for all the years of dedication to Woodbury, and, uh, as well as the new dispatchers, but, but, uh, the workshop, if you want to make the offer.
Very good.
Um, I want to say the same, I want to congratulate Pam, and I want to thank her for all her years of, um, service to the animals, and to everybody here in Woodbury. When I first, well, not my first, but, um, everybody knows Pam, you know, through Facebook, and, you know, and an angel she is to the animals, so we're gonna definitely miss her, um, I'm happy that Sarah's gonna become our, you know, full-timer, because she's also excellent. And, um, you know, I look forward to many years of the animal shelter going, I know there's rumors going around, and, you know, we're happy as a board to say that the animal shelter is still going, and will be going, and the cats will still be there, and so.
So there's no plans to close the shelter?
No, excellent.
And there's no plans to close the animal, uh, the cat portion either?
Right, yes.
That's good.
Stop the rumors.
Be a waste of a budget, if you say.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah. And, um, so I would like to also bring up, um, you know, I do it pretty much every meeting now, uh, Lisa is doing wreaths across America for the Cemetery of the Highlands. Um, she's usually outside church, uh, she can, you can find her online. She really needs to make sure that we have, I think there's about nine hundred, uh, veterans in the Cemetery of the Highlands, and we need to make sure that each and every one of those veterans are remembered. So if you could find her somewhere, or go online and get a wreath, there's bundles that you can get two wreaths for a certain price, you know, you can get six for a certain price. And, um, there is, uh, veteran, don't forget Veterans Day, is, uh, the Cemetery of the Highlands, eleven-eleven at eleven. And they have a ceremony, they're gonna be putting flags at the veterans' graves, and these will be the graves that will be marked for us to put the wreaths out. Uh, Supervisor Burke and myself, last year, we were there when we went to put the wreaths out, and honestly, a beautiful moment, you know, to go there and say the person's name and remember them, when your family can't be there anymore, so. You know, if you can remember to meet up with Lisa and buy a wreath, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Councilman Axel?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Pam and our new dispatcher. Pam's been with us for a long time, and I wish her a lot of luck, and hopefully she keeps on going, and, uh, and she chooses a new path, great.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I've got quite a few things to talk about tonight. First, I think it was a great work session, that most of the people who spoke did so courteously during the library discussion. Um, a couple of dates that are coming up, as Maria started to say, still my thunder. I don't know if anybody knows, because I certainly didn't. Uh, there is an election on Tuesday, this Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, from noon to eight, at the Monroe Berry Education Center, as well as every school district in the county, with the exception of Newburgh, for a one-hundred-sixty-five million dollar bond that the Orange Ulster Bosse's wants to take out for a capital project for twenty years of bonding. According to the, um, Monroe Berry School Board, Monroe Berry's portion of that will be twenty-two point six million, or thirteen point seven percent. And it will cause them to add to their tax, tax levy each year, one million ninety-six thousand dollars, which is equivalent to zero point eight-five percent of a tax levy increase. Monroe Berry has a hundred and sixty students that attend Orange Ulster Bosse's, ninety of which are in the CTE program, and seventy are in the special education program. So I thought that was some information the public should be aware of, whoever later may not stay to watch the whole meeting, and not just the first half. So again, that's gonna be October twenty-fifth at the Monroe Berry Education Center, from noon to eight. Uh, now, November eighth is a general election, you will vote where you normally vote, not where you were thrown around all year long at different elections. Uh, November twelfth, uh, the Village of Woodbury Highway Department will be hosting their semi-annual electronic collection and showing event, eight AM. And on November fifth, the Woodbury Lions Club with the Boy Scouts will be teaming up to assist the food pantry with their drive. The Lions will be distributing blue bags on November fifth and November sixth, at both post offices and local churches, churches. They'll also, yeah, I'm sorry, they'll also be available in my office and at the senior center. Uh, the residents are encouraged, grab the blue bag, fill it up, drop it up at the senior center on November twelfth, between ten AM and noon. Uh, you might possibly have your ring doorbell going off, because the Boy Scouts will be also going around town, leaving the blue bags on your doorstep. If they leave you a, leave it on your doorstep, they will come back and pick it up from your doorstep, once you fill it up. So, Woodbury, please be generous and kind, because November and December are very big times the food pantry needs, so that every family in Woodbury is able to celebrate whichever holiday they celebrate with food for their family's children. And, uh, that's my question.
Thank you very much, uh, I just have a few items. First, I want to, um, wish Pam, uh, all the best in her retirement, thank her for everything that she did with the animal shelter all through the years. I'm excited that, um, we hired, um, S- um, Sarah, and, um, you know, looking forward to continuing the animal shelter, and, uh, make it, um, you know, to keep it going the way, the way it is. Uh, I received a phone call from, um, Supervisor in Monroe, um, we have a agreement with him, with the, with the town of Monroe, as always, we just renewed that, and, um, so that would, that's good, it's positive, and we're, and we're looking to continue in, in such a manner. Um, also, Ms. Vogel, I'm happy that we were able to do that, the police chief and lieutenant, they always recommend the, the, you know, top shelf individuals, and, you know, she's a great person and a great addition. To, um, Ms. Maria Hunter, um, I've been around town this past, uh, week and a half, uh, and I'll tell you, I've had so many people stop me and say, what a terrific job it looks like, uh, that was done outside of the senior center and Hallowell's Library, and, um, as always, uh, she does a great job with her, her staff, and, so thank you very much for that. Um, another good note, as a board here, uh, one of the things that we did, um, when we were all elected in January, was we made a group, a group decision that we would partner with the village, and that we would share the grant right. And one of those things is, uh, we have been diligently working with, uh, Supervisor's office, with Clara Rivera, she does an awesome job up there. And I'd like to announce that tonight, that, um, we have received grants, and, um, the first one that was seventy, is seventy-five thousand dollars in federal funding under the fiscal year two thousand twenty. And, um, the first one that was seven, is $75,000 in federal funding under the fiscal year 2020 Tactical Team Grant Program, um, that was funded by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, which covers 10, uh, October 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2023. Taxable Team Grant. And the reason and the purpose for it is to improve and, and develop tactical team capabilities through equipment, training, exercise, and planning projects that support counterterrorism missions, uh, uh, terror, support counterterrorism missions in our jurisdiction. The second one awarded is for $15,000 in federal funding under fiscal year 2020 Tactical Team Grant Program, funded by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, which covers August 1st, 2022 to, um, excuse me, October 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2023 Explosive Detection K-9 Team Grant. And that purpose is to sustain, the sustainment, maintenance, and enhancement of our explosive detection canine test assets. We've also been awarded $11,226 from the Office of the Attorney General of the United States and the Office of the Community Oriented Policing Services. The COP, COPS Office approved for fiscal year 2022 School Violence Prevention. The, the purpose is the goal of reducing crime and building trust between law enforcement and community service. FEMA Grant, we've also received, uh, awarding, um, $25,251.63. This is payment related to disaster, 4480 COVID-19. This grant came about from the work performed by the camp clerk, um, like I said before, Clara Rivera, in the late 2020, early 2021. All these total, $126,477.63 that we have, as a town of Woodbury, received. Um, I want to just, for we, is to acknowledge both the chief and lieutenant, because they never stop looking to search out things like this. And, uh, it's just a credit to our police department, second to none. They are always there for us, supporting us. And, you know, as we saw tonight with our work session, anybody that was watching it, this is all about safety and security and protection of, of our community members, us. Um, we have great programs in place. We had, uh, the pool open this year, for example, right? And we had, um, the SROs in the summer working for us there to protect all of, we had over 40,000 people at the pool in 10 weeks. SRO officers, town of Woodbury Police Department, representing us. And each school that we have, the high school, the middle school, the elementary school, and then the Smith Cove Elementary School, where our Central Valley Library is located, same grounds. We have SRO officers there protecting our children, our teachers, right? So this is just, uh, just a credit to what we have as a police department. And, um, I just wanted to mention that tonight. It's great. $126,477.63 of grants. So good for Woodbury. All right, so with that being said, um, I don't think we have any other business to discuss. I'll, uh, take a motion a second to adjourn the meeting.
Take a motion.
Any discussion? Joe, do you want to go into executive session for Attorney McKay? Or the paper? Bye.